Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this called meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on March 17, 2020 at 4:30 PM. One or more members of the Board of Trustees may participate in this called meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present in the MacBurn Professional Development Center, Room 301A. I would like for someone physically present to serve as the Acting Secretary, and I hereby designate Dr. Reich. Thank you for volunteering. The Board of Trustees on March 17, 2020, beginning at 4:31 PM will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 5:30 PM. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for March 17, 2020, beginning at 5:58 PM. We will start our meeting with the open ceremony, so please join Dr. Reich in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And before I ask you to join us in a moment of prayer, I please ask that you would please include our colleague, Melody Fowler, with her father and her family, if you would just say kind words. So now this time, if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Now we come to our open forum for agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any cards?
No.
Thank you. We will move to our next item on the agenda, which is our discussion action item, which is Consider Pandemic Emergency Action Plan. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mason. So tonight, we want to provide the Board and the public an opportunity to listen to our response plan as we have been already implementing that. I will share that, as I've said before, this is truly an unprecedented time, not only for Arlington but for our country and really for the world. And it required a lot of different changes and adjustments. But I do want to start with how much I appreciate Arlington, the community of Arlington, all our staff, our students, the parents, how much we thank them for really coming together in a time of what we know is a crisis. And so it's unlike anything we faced, and it's a tribute to the team here in Arlington, ISD. Because in our part, and we are all interdependent, if this crisis has, you know, shown anything in terms of interdependency, it's a big demonstration of that. What we do is connected, what this community does is connected. And so our team is exceptional, from our teachers, to our principals, to our custodial staff, food service staff, administrators are truly exceptional. And when we have a situation like this, we are highly, highly dependent on the culture that we have in the system to be able to put plans together, to be able to communicate effectively, and to be able to deliver a service to our families and our students and our staff. And so I'll start with that great appreciation for everyone that works in Arlington ISD. So as you know, this has not been an easy time, and it is very fluid. It continues to change. We have had a communication ongoing, and I do anticipate that that will continue. Tonight, you'll hear some logistics and things that we've done. You'll also have an opportunity as a board to vote on a resolution that allows the continuation of payment and payroll to continue for our staff and our employees. And so with that, I'm going to ask Cindy Powell to start us off. We will try to hit the highlights, because there's a lot of context, and as you know, Board, through communication that we've sent out and things like that, you've seen it publicly also. There's a lot of detail. So we're going to try to hit the highlights and certainly allow enough time and things like that for questions. So you'll hear from Ms. Powell, you'll hear from Dr. Wertz, from Dr. Hill, and Dr. Brown, and Anita Foster. So we'll start with Cindy.
Great. Thank you. President Mays, Board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. Dr. Cavassos queued this up very well. These are unprecedented times. I've told several people that I know, the folks on my team, I think we feel like we have been placed on some distant planet at the moment, where everything is foreign and nothing looks normal, nothing is familiar. And so we've had to re-engineer a lot of the way we do business. And as Dr. Cavassos said, this matter is very fluid, and so we know that we will continue to make adjustments to plans we've already made and create new processes and new plans as we go forward. I do want to acknowledge several people, Dr. Cavassos did as well, in several groups. I want to recognize the work of 600 food service workers over the last few days, and David Lewis, the Director of Food Service, and his team, in the way that they have created a feeding plan that so far has worked very well, as you'll hear in a minute. And then also, our purchasing team, Tammy Craig, our Purchasing Director, Tony Drolinger, the Executive Director of Finance, and the entire finance staff, who have worked tirelessly through the weekend and over last week in trying to procure and get the equipment, the tents, all the materials and supplies that we needed to help food service operate the way that they have. Jeff Thomas, Sean Chockler, Corey Robinson, Kelly Horn, and 600 custodians and maintenance workers who have worked tirelessly. They worked last week cleaning our buildings, deep cleaning them, sanitizing them, and they have been providing logistical support for the food service operation and to us on a number of fronts. Anita Foster, Frank Sack, has done tremendous work late at night, through the weekends, through the holidays, to get things posted and to help us communicate. Barry Fox, in the academic services area, has stepped in over the last few days, and he and the instructional team have begun the work that Dr. Wertz and Tracy Brown are also very intimately engaged in, in developing instruction, a new instructional model. And so, and there are many, many others, but those are just some of the many people who have worked tirelessly over the last week to basically change our world, re-engineer how we operate. And so, to a person, everyone has come together with the best interest of kids in mind and unselfishly, and worked very, very hard under difficult circumstances to pull this off, and will continue that work for many weeks, I think. So with that, we want to cover several things with you this evening. First of all, we're going to touch on the district closure and then talk about the work we're doing to continue coordinating with authorities about the closure and different matters relating to the safety and welfare of our community, then also the services that we will provide during the closure. And then we'll talk about employee compensation and then communications effort, and there will be several of us that will have a hand in this. So on March 13, Tarrant County Judge Whitley declared a local disaster due to a public health emergency. And at that time, we were on a call with Judge Whitley and all the superintendents of Tarrant County School Districts, and we were told we needed to close our districts. Again, without hesitation, Judge Whitley went through a roll call of all the superintendents, and to a person, everyone said, "We're together, we're going to support this effort, and we will be closing." And so we made that decision to close the district for two weeks following our spring break, which has just, or is just ended. And so we will be closed for the next two weeks through March 29. We plan to resume school March 30, and certainly that is a fluid decision in and of itself and may change as we go forward. So what is canceled? Basically, everything, starting with in-person classes, unfortunately, all in-person classes, all activities, whether it's fine arts, athletics, everything from academic decathlon, student clubs, field trips, staff travel, student travel, professional development, anything that brings people together, potentially places our students and our faculty in close proximity to others, or sends them to places where there may be risk of exposure to this virus. We are continuing to coordinate with local authorities, Tarrant County, Tarrant County Public Health, City of Arlington, Texas Education Agency. So there is a daily call, 8:00 AM, with Judge Whitley and with the Tarrant County Public Health Department, which we've received updates about their work and their findings and their recommendations. The Texas Education Agency likewise has been holding a daily call beginning last week, maybe Thursday, and then through the weekend, with the Commissioner of Education leading that call for any superintendent and senior leadership across the state. And he addresses a number of issues, and they at TEA continue to compile documentation and guidance information that they are updating and posting daily on their website. So that's been a tremendous resource to us. In terms of funding, when we have those calls with the Commissioner, he has told us repeatedly, every day we've had a call with him, that school districts should not worry about their state, the school foundation program funding, our basic state aid. That money will flow. They have committed that time and again. And so the mechanics of that will change a bit from what we're accustomed to, where we typically report attendance, and we get payments on a scheduled basis, and then we settle up at the end of the year. We'll all have to apply for waivers for missed school days and missed time, and then those adjustments will be factored into the funding formulas, and we'll still continue to get our funding at the same level we were expecting to get had we continued in school as scheduled. Federal disaster funds may be a source to help us with some of the incremental costs that we are incurring during this closure. We do not know the details. We do know that the President has declared a national state of emergency and has freed up significant federal resources to assist states across the country. We do not know what that looks like yet. No one has the details yet of how that money will flow to states, to cities, whether it, you know, any of it to school districts. We anticipate we will have an opportunity to claim some federal funding to help us with some of our incremental costs. I liken this to Hurricane Katrina some years ago, where we took in approximately 1,200 kids who were displaced from that hurricane, and there was federal funding that came to us through Impact Aid, federal Impact Aid programming, that helped us recoup those incremental costs. What we keep hearing time and time and time again, every call we're on with TEA is, and with the county even, we have to keep meticulous records of all of our incremental costs so that when the time comes, we can claim those federal dollars. And we had that experience with Hurricane Katrina. The reporting is very extensive, and the level of detail and the amount of documentation that they asked for is significant, and so we've already started in that effort of tracking those costs. USDA, U.S. Department of Agriculture, will provide funding for the meals that we are serving to kids right now, and that's a reimbursement type program. And everybody is very familiar with the fact that our food service program operates in a separate fund from the general fund. And so they basically have to make their own way, if you will. They don't receive any tax dollars from our general fund budget to support their operation. So we have received waivers, us along with other school districts across the country, in the manner in which we serve meals and then can claim them for reimbursement. So we've had some relief there. We still have some work, I think, to do in that area, but we expect to, we know we will receive reimbursement funds for these meals that we are serving to students, and that will help us cover the cost of preparing those meals. I anticipate that we should receive enough USDA funds to cover those costs. They are operating this in a manner similar to what is called summer feeding, and our summer feeding program, we typically are reimbursed enough to cover the cost of that program. And so I anticipate this will be the same, and there again, there's, as we say with so much of this, we don't know for sure, and we'll certainly have to see how that plays out. We want to move next now to talk about what we are doing to continue our operation, and it's going to look much different on a lot of fronts than we've been accustomed to, but we'll talk first about how we feed kids and what we're doing there, and then just district operations in general and how we're continuing those operations. And then Dr. Wertz is going to talk about our at-home learning that he and his team are working on. So following this, then Anita Foster will speak about our communications efforts and what she and her team are doing for that. In terms of meal distribution, we launched on Monday a feeding program for any student, any child who is 18 years of age or younger to receive a free meal. We set up 23 sites across the district for those distribution sites. We will operate those distribution sites from 11 to 1:00 each day, Monday through Friday, while we're closed. All of the meals are free. We are operating this in what I would describe as a drive-through arrangement. In order to try to keep kids from congregating inside a building, we do not have people coming into our buildings. It's a curbside type of service. A parent can drive up, or a student can walk up, and we can hand them, two meals actually, a lunch meal for that day that is a hot meal, and then we also hand them a bag that has cereal and a muffin, it has fruit, it has milk, and it has juice in it, and they can take that home for their breakfast the fall and morning. We have posted menus online. Children do have to be present to receive a meal, and that's a federal guideline, but no IDs are required. And again, any child 18 years of age or younger can receive one of these meals. And so we plan to operate this Monday through Friday each day as long as we are in a closed state. And so far, the last couple of days, it's worked very well. The first day, we served 2,482 meals at our 23 sites. Today, we serve 6,150, so about two and a half times the number we served yesterday. We picked 23 sites. We tried to get coverage across the district to get as close as we could into neighborhoods. We took into account the geography of the entire district and getting that coverage across the district, and also making sure that we selected schools that had good traffic flow and good driveways and what have you to help us facilitate this curbside type service. And so, so far, we've been very pleased with the way that this has gone. We also know that, you know, to operate, we have to designate some employees as essential staff. Frankly, we think all of our employees are essential to what we do in our normal operations, but when we're closed, we identify the particular positions that we need to work, whether it's onsite or work remotely, to continue our operation. And so we went through this process over the weekend. The chiefs, the assistant superintendents, and department administrators worked to identify who in their respective areas was essential to district operation. And then we notified those individuals by 5:00 Sunday that they were considered essential. To the extent possible, we want people to work from home, and so that creates some challenges in some cases, making sure that everyone has the right devices, the right tools to do that work. And so the Technology Department has been extremely responsive to helping us with those The particular combination of people who are essential to our operation may vary over our closure. We know that there may be occasions where we need a particular payroll clerk because of the particular payroll run that needs to be processed during one week or several days one week, and then the next week, maybe it's a different payroll clerk who works typically a different payroll run. So we've been very clear with everybody that that will ebb and flow as we move along. At some point, we anticipate, there will be more teachers that are identified as essential as we begin to roll out the home instruction plan. So that will just ebb and flow over the course of the closure. To the extent possible, again, we do want folks to work from home. The objective here is to continue the work, and I put that in bold on the slide, just continue the work. And examples of that, we, today, my team, we've had three different meetings that I've been involved with, all via video conferencing. One where we were working on a design of one of our bond projects with the architects. Another was a meeting of the senior finance leadership team to coordinate on different matters that have come up just today. We were on senior staff meeting this morning, and we are every morning during this closure. So the work is going on, and what we're very hopeful of is, within the next few days, we get somewhat beyond the reaction to the planning to completely flip the way we do business and completely, as best we can, get back to doing the business. Everything from HR processing, I know even a few minutes ago, when the Board was in closed session, I processed requests from my queue approving postings of positions for HR. HR folks had done their piece today and processed those on up to me, and so the work is flowing. Certainly, the work of food service will be ongoing, and our maintenance and custodial operations will be ongoing every day. So our objective on the operations side of the house is to keep things moving, whether it's bids, it's payroll, it's paying our bills through accounts payable, all of this work. We're simply having to find a different way to do it, and the team is working very, very well together, and we're beginning now to get past the how to do it and moving on to actually doing that. We are using video conferencing. We've all chuckled a bit. Some of us are ahead in our experience doing that. I think Dr. Wertz and his group have a lot of experience doing that, some others, even the Finance Division have not, and so we've all, that's been some of our first learning in the last day or so, is how to launch the video conferences, and they've worked very, very seamlessly, so very well. So compensation, immediately in any circumstance like this, when there is a closure, people, first thing they begin to wonder about is their pay. And so we wanted to be very clear with everyone, we made a statement early on, that all employees will be paid during this closure from March 16 through the 29. The Board this evening will consider a resolution to formalize that statement. We do not expect the payroll schedule to be impacted by this. Our payroll clerks, our payroll manager are working. They've been working over the last few days to get processes in place. Everyone is able to work from home in that department for the most part, and so that work is continuing on. The auxiliary employees, our food service workers, our maintenance workers, security, the mechanics in the garage, and also our salaried, non-exempt workers such as clerks and secretaries who are called upon to work, will be paid at a rate of one and a half times their normal hourly rate while they work during this closure. Everyone else is paid at their normal straight time. And so again, the Board will be asked to approve a resolution this evening to formalize that. So I'm going to turn that over at this point to Dr. Wertz, and he's going to talk about the home learning plan.
Good evening, President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the Board. Thank you for letting us be here this evening to share with you some of our responses to the emergency that we're experiencing. I want to reiterate Ms. Powell's commendations and thanks to all of our staff and principals who've been working tirelessly to make these things happen for our community and our students. It's been really great to work with a team that gels so quickly and communicates so well to make these things possible for our students. I've been talking with my team and principals about the reality that even though we're working today to provide resources to communities, all of our staff are, also need to be mindful that we have employees who are also nervous, who have anxiety about their own families and their own well-being, and so as we take all those things into account, I'm going to share with you this evening some resources that we're also putting in place to help make sure that they are being taken care of. So when it comes to our instructional response to the emergency, we're looking at it in four distinct phases. What I like to do initially is to provide a general overview about what each of those phases mean, and then I'll dive more deeply into each one of them in terms of what they entail. The first phase primarily is designed to provide access to resources and materials immediately to families and to students. Our goal in this first phase is to ensure that our students continue to have opportunities to be engaged in learning and that we can minimize as much learning regression that sometimes happens when kids have gaps of time between their engagement in the learning process. So it's important to note that in Phase 1, we are not trying to provide first-time instruction, meaning instruction that where they're being introduced to new concepts that they've never heard before. During Phase 1, which would happen between now and March 30, our only goal right now is to get kids actively engaged in learning and to provide their families and parents with resources that they could do with their children easily at home. And I'll share some examples of the ways, the way that is happening. Our other goal is to leverage each phase as an opportunity to prepare staff for initiation to the next phase. So in future phases, we will be engaging more broadly in online learning with our students in a more customized, individualized way. And so what we intend to do in the first two phases is to begin to provide professional learning to bring teachers up to speed around their skill sets, to leverage some of our resources that we have for students to facilitate online learning, and to allow those teachers who are ready and already using those resources to begin prepping, and then teachers who need professional learning, individualized, to bring them up to speed to do that. So I'll talk about that, too. And then we're also designing launch services that we're launching pertaining to social, emotional needs of our staff and students, which we'll, which we'll all talk about as well. That's Phase 1, which happens primarily in the first two weeks of closure. Beginning March 30, we will enter into what we're calling Phase 2. And in Phase 2, what we will launch is what I call broad online learning for large bands of students facilitated by a finite number of staff members. So students will have the Learning Hub, which will continue all the way through closure indefinitely, forever, how long that may last for initially the first two weeks. But we will begin in Phase 2, starting March 30, between March 30 and April 10, providing students with access to learning that's really directed more towards specific content areas. During this time also, we will provide core training to all staff members who are engaged in reading, writing, math, and science, and social studies content areas. So core staff will be provided intense professional learning So, core staff will be provided intense professional learning as part of their workday during Phase Two, to make sure that all staff members that provide core instruction to students at pre-K all the way through 12th grade are able to engage with learners directly and instruct their own individual classes that they have online as teacher of record when we initiate Phase Three. Phase Three would begin on April 10th and go all the way until we are back online, should it be that we move beyond the two weeks. What Phase Three basically entails is teachers teaching their own classes, using a schedule where kids can engage in learning through Canvas or Seesaw. And I do have a small adjustment for primary grades where we have young, young learners where that kind of platform is not going to be feasible, and I'll share that with you, too. Phase Four is really when you get past closure and we're coming back online. And really, that phase is focused on how do we close gaps that were naturally generated in a time of emergency for students who didn't get the type of learning that they normally would have received in the classroom? And how do we mitigate that in the summer months and in the first six weeks when school returns? So, I'm going to dive into each one of these in more detail and provide some explicit kind of design components that pertain specifically to the learner and then to the teacher and staff. So, the first one is Phase One. And I'm sure you've already been online and you've been able to look at our Home Learning Hub. For those that are listening, if you go to our landing page and you click on the button that says Coronavirus Update, you click on that. On the right-hand side, there's another link that takes you directly to our At Home Learning Hub. Also, on the main landing page, there's a link above the Coronavirus Update button. And if you go to the At Home Learning Hub, you will find buttons that will lead you to activities and online resources for all students, grades pre-K through 12. This online learning hub, At Home Learning Hub, will be available, it will be online until we decide to take it off. So, regardless of which phase we're in, the hub will remain in place so that parents can continue to engage with their learners. It is available in multiple languages. Right now, if you go to our website where it's located in the upper left-hand, upper right-hand corner, you can select the language that you want the page translated into. So, it will, you can tab it, translate into Spanish, to English, to Vietnamese, Arabic, German, French, Spanish, there's Russian, there's multiple languages there. We do want everyone to know that we do recognize that this is a computerized translation, and so, there are some imperfections, and we do, we do recognize that for the initial phase. We do believe it's sufficient for what we need. When we move into other phases, we do have the World Languages Department being cognizant of the fact that there are some translations specifically in Spanish that are going to need to be modified. The focus of the hub is around the core content areas. So, initially, our goal is to, our deadline as a team is to have it all up and running efficiently with everything by Wednesday. But we wanted to provide families with immediate access to resources because their children were not going back to school on Monday. So, if you have been on recently, you've noticed that we focus primarily on reading, writing, and mathematics. And we provided simple, basic activities that were standards-based that parents could begin to engage in. And we recognize that this is a one-size-fits-all kind of scenario. We will begin to differentiate that content over the next couple of days, but initially, we wanted to put content in parents' hands. One thing that I would like to note for everybody is, there's the one-size-fits-all kind of activities, and then there's individualized learning that's been embedded. So, the team intentionally leveraged resources that staff and students already have access to and are familiar with. So, our adoption, HMM, is embedded into the hub. We also have embedded links to Imagine Math and iStation. Imagine Math and iStation both use adaptive technology to provide customized learning activities that are based on the assessed individual learning level of the student. So, students, regardless of what their reading levels are, can log into Imagine, or iStation or Imagine Math, and the actual activities that they will be pumped through the Wi-Fi or through the internet service to their desktop or device will be customized to the level that's assessed for them. So, for families and parents, that's an important part to note. We have the things that you can do with all of your kids, which we'll customize and differentiate over time. And then, we also have online resources that you can leverage with your students who are actually at the levels they are to keep them moving forward. One of the things that we're having to be very cognizant of is how are we addressing the needs of our various learning populations, specifically our English language learners and our special ed groups? We are working to find ways to accommodate them. One thing that we do know is that, and I'm going to explain in a future phase, how we're going to address specifically the needs of our learning disabled students who are, have IEPs. But our World Language Department, Special Ed Department, and the CNI Department are collaborating to help build content so that these learners' needs are actually being addressed. One thing I would also like to note that is that we will be collaborating with the PACE Department, which is our parent involvement department, to help our parents understand how to access and use these resources while they're at home. One of the initial questions that we typically have been receiving is, well, how are students going to be doing these things if they don't have devices in their hands? So, as a team, what we're doing right now is we're generating an opportunity to survey our staff and possibly our students to understand what their needs are and to define the parameters in terms of which devices students will need. So, as we move into future phases that I'm about to talk about, depending upon the type of learning you be engaged in, say, as a junior in high school versus a first grader, you might need a different type of device to do those things. So, we want to assess, we want to have some way of assessing what that need is and who has that, who needs what device and how many students are living in certain homes so that when, when we do have a way of distributing devices in a way that we anticipate may be very similar to lunches, that students can check them out and take them home, and we can deliver them without them congregating at schools and then have them in their possession so they can do the work that we're providing. So, that's Phase One. So, this screen that you're seeing in front of you basically distinguishes, so I've talked about everything that's pretty much happy on the learner's side. If you go to the hub, we provide timeframes for parents so they know about how much time we encourage kids to spend in these content areas each day. And we also are talking about how to leverage even our AISD YouTube channel, which I'll talk about in a future phase. On the teacher's side, there are things that we want our teachers to engage in while they're participating in a workday. We have, Dr. Brown provides daily communication to principals every day that provides some direction and communication that's streamlined, so everyone's hearing the same information in a timely manner. And included in that communication are things that we're asking teachers to engage in with their students at home. Some simple things in this week we've asked them to do is contact their students, check on their well-being, let them know that we're there and that we're listening, and to assess in some ways what their accessibility to online or Wi-Fi is, just so we have a sense about it. We also have teachers that are engaging in, on various platforms, doing read-alouds and talking with their students. And so, we're encouraging that, and we're going to be providing some additional direction about that later on this week. The other thing that we're going to be doing during this phase that I mentioned earlier for teachers is, we're putting together a professional learning plan that identifies specific bands of teachers and specific content that we would like them during their workday to begin to engage themselves in so that they can become proficient if they aren't in our learning management system, which is Canvas and Seesaw, which is another platform we use specifically in younger grades, so that our, our teachers can gear up for the event that they would deliver that direct instruction to their students. So, we will begin starting that in Phase One, that training. And also, we will be working with principals to recruit a specific group of teachers at the various grade levels and content areas that can collaborate with department leaders to develop and place lessons online that kids can begin to access. The important thing to note about these lessons is they will, they will, they will come in Phase Two, but they will not be what I would call customized learning like you would get in Phase Three where teachers doing direct teach. It is, it is designed for bulk, and it will not really have a lot of brand-new learning. It is designed to keep kids engaged and to keep them from regression. But that, we're going to be working on the design of that for Phase Two. Phase Two actually starts, as I mentioned, April 30th, and we will then launch these online limited instruction lessons using Canvas and Seesaw. For primary grades, especially our really young learners, we know that accessing Canvas and navigating Canvas may not be feasible. So, what we will be developing are instructional packets that parents can begin to use with their students at home, and we will deliver them either via the meal drop-off. So, when you come pick up a meal, you also get your packet to take home to work on instruction. And we're also in discussion about even directly mailing it through bulk mail to the home so that there's no, there's no reason why you wouldn't have access to your instruction. We know that some families are taking advantage of meals, others may not be. If we bulk mail it directly to their home, everyone has it just being delivered, assuming the mail is still working. So, these are, we will have those packets available online. We will probably be sending them by mail and available at the meal stop points. We will, for the online courses that we'll be putting initially in Phase Two, which will only last about two weeks, the content on there will be specifically around reading, writing, and math content. And we will have selected identified courses that we'll work through. It won't be every, every course and every content area. It'll, it'll just be getting, getting us geared up. And it will be designed collaboratively across the different department levels. We will introduce some first teach, but it won't be very broad because we want to be cognizant of making sure everyone has access to resources, too, so that we don't accidentally start creating gaps by moving forward in the curriculum before everyone's actually ready to begin. We are going to start selecting some advanced courses, and we have some, some resources that we'll launch either in Phase Two, possibly Phase Three, that are connected to our AP coursework, which, which I'll describe in just a minute. So, in Phase Two for the learner, it's very similar to what I described earlier, except for now they'll have more access to new content that's actually going to be delivered on our, our learning platform. And they'll also have the content that's been revised and updated in our At Home Learning Hub. We will also continue to provide resources that accommodate their independent learning levels using those resources I mentioned earlier, iStation and Imagine Math. But then, we will also be providing access to social, emotional resources and community resources, which at the end of the presentation, I'll, I'll go into in some detail. On the teacher's side during Phase Two, during March 30th and April 10th, the, the main difference is, is twofold. One is, rather than having select teachers building just content and putting things online, all core teachers will be engaged in professional learning to prepare for Phase Three, which would be directly teaching your own students. So, while we will begin that process in Phase One, we're going to continue and dive really deeply in it, into it in Phase Two to make sure that we have breadth across our system in the core content areas. There has been some discussion even today about what do we do about other areas like CTE and courses that kids are taking. I'll just speak candidly, in a conversation I had with Ms. Polster, the principal over at our Career Tech Center, many of their courses are already leveraging, 90% of their courses are already leveraging Canvas. And so, we're talking about how can kids, how can we use the CTC as the hub where most of our CTE coursework would be managed in this timeframe? Because it accesses, all the kids from all the high schools are leveraging those courses from their teachers in the first place. That speaks to the upper-level courses. We're still working on solutions for the younger, for the freshman and sophomore courses. In terms of, in terms of a, a, a platform for young learners, one of the other ideas that we're discussing is, if you receive a packet at home and you're not online engaging with some sort of customized learning with a teacher, how can we personalize that learning for you still? And so, we have talked about recruiting teachers and staff members that we identify to leverage our AISD YouTube channels to do read-alouds, to do math talks, to do maybe some lessons that lots of people could have access to. So that if I'm a parent and I have a first-grade student and she's at home and she's working on her packet, there may be a schedule that I could follow as a parent and say, oh, let's go on the TV, let's go on the TV, let's go on the YouTube. And they can watch a teacher, read them a story, or conduct a math talk with them and things like that. So, that, that is happening between March 30th and April 10th. In April 10th, we move into Phase Three, and that's where we leverage all this prep that we've used in this runway of time that we have to begin to launch individualized learning. The best way I can describe Phase Three is if you're a classroom teacher of record for a core content area, you'll be providing direct instruction to your students through Canvas, to your own students of record. One of the questions that came up is, well, will one teacher be creating this course that everybody's going to be launching? And that is not the plan right now. The plan would be that the teachers create their own lessons and put them on their own Canvas so that they can customize it for the needs of their students. Some students in Algebra I class sitting at Sam Houston High might look very different than Algebra I class sitting at Bowie High, and we want to honor where they all left when they went to spring break. And so, to make sure that we're not accidentally creating gaps, we'll allow teachers to build their courses. We're going to teach them how, put their, their materials online and navigate their, their Canvas course with their students. Right now, our plan is to really focus on online learning using an LMS, primarily with intermediate and secondary grades. One thing that we do have to kind of consider is, we need to get a better sense about how, and by surveying our staffs, how many teachers actually leverage this LMS really typically in their classroom? If you're an active learning cycle teacher, for example, you've used the LMS. It's very, very common. Several high schools are using it, several teachers are using it. But we also have some teachers that haven't been using it totally. So, we want to make sure that if you're a student and your teacher has all these things on, for you available on Canvas, that you actually can use it. In the event that that is the case, we are considering another way of getting to it, which is, and we would work with the parent department, is are there ways that we can even have training or online learning for parents to engage so they can figure out how to use it, so they can also work on it with their young learners? So, we're trying to find ways to address that. For primary grades, we'll continue with the packets and continue with the YouTube channels while we're going, just simply because the idea of having a pre-K student on Canvas is really not really ideal. The other thing I want to mention in Phase Three, which kind of reiterates what Ms. Powell was mentioning, is we're planning as if we're going to come back online, right? So, we, we, as a department, are being very proactive in making sure that we're not stopping our work in response to this, so that when this is over, then we're all catching up what was left behind. So, we are still prepping for summer training, we're still prepping for the introduction of our new curriculum, we're still prepping for onboarding of new classrooms and active learning cycle, and all the things we would normally do, so that when school ends, the next one kind of picks up. And that kind of leads into this idea of Phase Four, which I'm going to jump into because I've already talked about that. So, Phase Four is, this should say Phase Four, but basically what it is, is this is, this is assuming we're back, like we're back. In Phase Four, what we're going to try to do initially is to figure out how do we fill the gaps that were generated in learning based on this experience? And there's two ways that that actually happens, right? One is, we have all these resources, but even, even in the phased situation, as fast as we're trying to move, the reality is there's still weeks of time where kids are kind of working on content they've already learned. So, what we, what we're going to do is find a way to assess our students at the end to figure out how big is that gap and what standards are what we would call power standards that really need to be addressed in order to prep students for future coursework. The challenge around this is not just about can we make sure that we fill up the gaps from this semester? The challenge is, is that these courses are all vertically aligned, and if kids enroll in courses next year, but they have these gaps from this year, they're not going to have the skills ready to engage in those courses, so then they're going to struggle in those courses, too. So, what we would do during Phase Four is to broaden our scope for summer learning. So, our plan today is, if we're back online, then its summer school would continue as normal. So, if you're a student that wanted to register for summer school for first-time credit, that will be available to you. If you're a student that's registering for summer school for a course recovery or a credit recovery, that will be available to you. But we also intend on broadening our band for summer school so that it can include kids that we know have gaps in learning that were generated in this scenario and invite them to engage in learning in the summer so that they can close those gaps before school starts. We do know that even though we offer things, there are students for some reason that choose not to or cannot participate. So, we will also be looking at the first six weeks of our curriculum documents for next school year and identifying which power standards we need to spiral in from the last end of this school year into the new courses so that kids are caught up and not, not struggling in their new class or course. And so, that, that's how we would address Phase Four. The other thing I wanted to mention that I didn't mention in the last phase is AP courses. College Board has published a, a platform for which all their courses can actually be taught. So, AP teachers can actually deliver instruction using this platform. It has pre-assessment, post-assessments, and things like that. We are intending on leveraging this platform to keep coursework going. What we want to do is we don't, we're trying to prevent some teachers at some schools starting, and other teachers not, because of what it's doing is it creates anxiety across the system because we have different families with different expectations, and that lack of continuity is, is a challenge. So, what we will do is we will launch either in Phase Two or the beginning of Phase Three, this process with College Board, and give teachers some lead time to prep for that with their students. Some teachers have already been using this, so they're very familiar with it, but it will allow AP coursework to continue so that when they come back online and they sit for their assessments, they'll be successful. College Board has already announced that they're adjusting their testing schedules, so kids who normally would have tested in April are now going to be testing in June possibly, and they're being very flexible with us. In terms of CTE courses, who normally engage in testing- In terms of CTE courses, who normally engage in testing, that's all based, their testing, their industry-based exams are all based on their readiness, based on their mastery of their course, they're not set dates like everything else. So we'll be able to accommodate those students easily. And then SAT and ACT is also being adjusted, and that feedback has already been provided to us by that organization. So in terms of our testing, that's taken care of. The other thing I wanted to mention is we are collaborating, as you know, in dual-credit and coursework that's at both UTA and TCC. UTA, all of our students who are engaged in dual-credit coursework at UTA will be going online, and that communication is already being delivered out by UTA. The greatest impact that that has is on the students in the STEM Academy, and we've communicated directly with Marlene, and she's in the loop about that. The other thing is, TCC announced today that most of their cohort of dual-credit is online. We're still going to be working with them a little bit about how to address students who are not cohorted and their approach to their instruction there. The word we've received so far is that they will primarily be online, but there is some discretion for professors to congregate groups of students, 50 or more. And so we're going to be in dialogue with them about that, because that's a little different than what we're doing. So we're going to, we'll talk with them more about this. I don't have anything definite to share about that. One other thing I'd like to mention before I pass the mic is around social-emotional learning. We have one-page resource that we are publishing and posting online. Right before I walked into the meeting, I approved one that will be sent to Anita to post onto the website specifically for staff, which talks to them about, here are some resources and things that we want you to consider as you think about your own emotional health and well-being. We'll also be, we're also actively working on another one-pager that will be posted for parents and students on how to have conversations with your children about this situation, and how to help manage their stress. And then, of course, we'll also be posting links to websites and resources in the community that our families may need. Another thing that we're putting together is a hotline. So we'll be leveraging counselors across the district to take calls from students and staff who may need someone to talk to, to just to work through the emotional stress that is this, that this situation may be causing. And then we also will be leveraging our social workers to field calls from parents and students who may need access to resources either in our system or those within the county or community that we may not have at our disposal immediately, but we can direct them. So those are, those are the big chunks that we're working on, and the order in which we intend to go over the next several weeks. I think now I'm going to turn the time over to Anita, Ms. Foster, and she's going to share about our communication plan.
President Mays, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to speak a little bit about how we're communicating with our constituents, our stakeholders. Before I start, I want to just say a sincere thank you. In a time that is very uncertain, it's understandable that parents and teachers and students have a lot of questions. So we've been working very hard on the communications team to answer as many questions as we possibly can in the most timely fashion. Folks have been very understanding when we let them know that maybe we don't know something right now, but we share that we're working on it, and that has been received very well. So I just want to thank everyone who is understandably concerned that we are doing the best that we can here. I'll start today with the audiences that we're speaking with, and primarily, those are our audiences, people that are closest to the Arlington ISD. And those are our students and our teachers, our staff and the parents, along with our community stakeholders. So we've been crafting specific messaging that addresses each of the needs for those different constituency groups. Our outbound channels, our outbound channels that we've been using have been fairly robust. Early on, about two weeks ago, we actually established a landing page for coronavirus, and that was before it was renamed to COVID-19. So we've been at this for a little while to make sure that as information emerges, that we're able to continue to grow our page. So there now, you've heard from Ms. Powell and Dr. Wertz, that we are adding and continuing to add topics of interest to our stakeholders to that landing page, and we will continue that as we go. We've also been using Intouch, which is a system we use to communicate with parents. So we've been sending those messages in English and Spanish on a regular, updated schedule, so that they're aware of what's happening. We've been using outbound channels for communication with internal staff as well. We have AISD Weekly, which is an internal tool that we use that hits all of our staff with messaging at the same time, and we have all-district email. Dr. Cavassos has also recorded staff video that we sent out on Sunday afternoon to make sure that our staff was aware of what was going on up to that date, and that strategy will continue as well. We are included in principal updates that Dr. Tracy Brown sends out, so that we can, in one communication to principals, let them know what's coming up next, and also inquire about what their needs are to be able to communicate with their constituents as well. We've been using our social media channels, and in particular, for emergencies. We use Facebook and Twitter. We have visibility on lots of other social media channels, but these are the ones that we want people to direct themselves to, to get the most up-to-date and speedy information from us. So Facebook and Twitter are those channels that we're updating about this particular crisis. And then we've engaged our news media to help us push messaging out. We had a lot of crews that came out yesterday to our first day of feeding, and we doubled the number of meals from one day to the next. And so that was very encouraging, and we're very grateful that we can count on that large megaphone to help spread our message. We also have some inbound communication channels. Those are things that come to us that we react to responsively. We have our main email address that is Pio@AISD.net. It's an extremely busy place right now, as you might imagine. We have a lot of emails come to that box every day. We do have several staff members that are doing shifts throughout the day to get those questions answered just as quickly as we can. We're also using our social media inboxes. That's a place where messages come to us on Facebook primarily, where people have concerns, and we can answer those. And then in the comment section of our social media feeds, we get inbound messaging coming there, so that we can respond and react to that as well. Then our goals moving ahead, as the situation changes, we are dedicated to changing with it. So we are working in lockstep with the leadership of the organization, with department heads, with service delivery folks, to make sure that we're fully understanding all of the messaging that our community needs, so that we can get it out and make sure it's accurate and timely. And we are also continuing to send announcements on a regular basis through all of those channels I described, so that we can keep people updated. And then we're committed to responding to our community in a timely fashion. I want to just reinforce once again that we're extremely grateful to the community. The response has been overwhelming. A lot of the messages that come to us are parent concerns, teacher concerns, but a lot are also very generous offers to help. And so we very much appreciate that. We're going to continue responding, and we just encourage the community with questions to use that address, Pio@AISD.net, and our team will respond as quickly as we can. Thank you.
That, that's an overview of our current work. We will be happy to take any questions the board has at this time.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Powell and Dr. Wertz and Ms. Foster, for this presentation. Colleagues, I'm going to ask if you have a question, if you would just raise your hand, and I will call on you. Ms. Walton, we will make sure that we're also paying attention to if you have a question as well. So with that being said, we can start. Dr. Reich.
Thank you, President Mays. I can't even say thank you enough to Dr. Cavassos, Ms. Powell, everybody in this district. You guys have undergone beyond a Herculean effort. We are, as has been said, in uncharted waters, unprecedented, locally and nationally, globally. It is a situation where this really tests what you have as a team, what you have individually, and I cannot thank you enough, cannot be prouder. What you've just laid out, as I said, beyond a Herculean effort, for people to wrap their arms and heads around this, this is all within the, basically, 48 to 96 hours. That is phenomenal. Thank you to each of you for what you are doing for our kids, for our staff. To do all of this in conjunction with keeping the eye on the ball, that the rest of the world doesn't stop, we still have to conduct business. Your responsiveness is just, it's amazing. It really, really is. The, what you even have done here in setting us up in respect of CDC guidelines with social distancing, thank you for that. Thank you for taking the time. You guys are in emergency response mode, as it should be right now, and to take the time, it's important for us to be informed and engaged, especially publicly. But the amount of time that it's taken for you just to go through all of this is incredible. Thank you guys so very much, for everybody that has taken the opportunity to perform amazingly above and beyond. It is just, I can't say that enough. Thank you to everybody, as has been already mentioned as well, while you have your own concerns personally to address at the same time. The amount of information and the rollout from the communications, from the learning, the social-emotional, I would, I mean, we're always proud of our district and proud of all of you for the work that you do and the communications. It is stellar. I would be hard-pressed to see if there's any other district that is doing it to this extreme, to this level of excellence. It is, I could go on and on. I guess I'll just stop there, because I'm just blown away, absolutely blown away, when this, this all essentially started Thursday, Friday. And, and here we are with a rollout, not only a design, but an implementation of something that would take months, and you've done it in literally 48, 72, 96 hours. I really appreciate how you've all gone through the, what I am in complete agreement with, your prioritization of what the needs are, the emergency response, and then the layering in of other things, taking care of the identification of what are essentials, who are essential personnel, whose, whose needs are the most right now, which is obviously our staff and our students, our parents, the community at large, yes, but there's a lot of immediate concerns with that emergency response. So I think on all of our minds is the safety, as always, of our students and their health. And with that, the level that you've addressed the food insecurity potential here, which with a district with 73%, 4% economically disadvantaged, we know that our children come to school, and a big part is that they are fed at school. So in comparison to other districts, smaller and larger, you have implemented a distribution operation to address that food insecurity much greater than any that I've heard locally, possibly statewide. And the growth, because of our communications, because of the outreach, it's, you know, 20, what was it, 20, almost 2,500 yesterday, six, almost 6,200 today. This is day two of it. We're going to have a lot, and as we should, it is so vital. And I also think that addressing the academics, offering the tips, the at-home learning for what parents can do with their children, and additionally, rolling into the Phase One, Dr. Wertz, the social-emotional aspect of it, people are confused. There's so much misinformation, there's so much competing information, conflicting information. And kids are not necessarily understanding, and sometimes parents aren't quite sure what to do in explaining all of this to them, because we really don't know. As a health professional, I will tell you, there's so much speculation that is in the media, mixed with fact. The fact is that this is a novel virus. We have not seen it before, therefore, we really don't know how it's going to react, how we're going to respond to it, what is going to happen. We know that it is much more highly contagious. We know that it is a much higher of a mortality count possibility in our elderly. And we also know that our close proximity is what spreads that. And I am very appreciative at the county level, the state level, DSHS support has led to, yes, this important and difficult determination that we're out for these two weeks. And I really appreciate what you've said, because it might be longer. We are actively addressing that. And that is something that is maybe very difficult for people to wrap their heads around, because we're just now looking at what are we doing right now. But I just commend you for looking into the future, what if, what if, because we don't know. So having social-emotional resources available are, it's phenomenal and necessary, and I so appreciate that. Our kids, there is obviously a potential for regression, so that your Phase One, Two, Three, and Four approach, Dr. Wertz, thank you. There's, as we know, this is changing just about hourly. We don't know where we're going to be this time tomorrow, what directives there will be. I appreciate everything that we're doing in complying with, first and foremost, CDC guidelines. And if you look at those guidelines, it's very clear what our potential actions would be if there's community spread, which we have. And we're at the beginning of this curve. And of course, everybody's heard, the point is to flatten the curve. We also know that we can carry this thing around and be asymptomatic, especially our young ones. We don't want our young ones necessarily interacting and spreading and heightening this curve. As a healthcare professional, our healthcare system will be immediately overrun. I, I, every healthcare professional that I know, that I'm in touch with, they are maxed out already, on the front end, trying to reposition operations and prepare for, even though we have more ICU beds per capita comparatively to some of our global, global friends that are undergoing such extreme lockdown situations, there's, the whole structure of this isolation, this social distancing is, is a new thing for the capacity that healthcare, health systems can handle. So, so there's a long road ahead, I fear. And with that said, though, you guys are setting us up for great success, setting our students up for great success, and our families. I just really wanted to put all that out there. I know that's long, and I'm not trying to grandstand. It just, I, it needs to be said. We are in, in communications with our health officials. and our education officials and other statewide, county-wide elected officials. We're all in this together. And the, the one thing that I will say is I, as an individual, as a healthcare professional, am a little bit concerned that there is somewhat of a Swiss cheese approach to this. And, and what I mean by that is we're not all doing it together. I think it's so smart of Tarrant County Health, that director in accord with DS, DS, DSHS, to have the entire county make this move. And I would hope that moving forward, whatever those moves are, it is done with the guidance and the council and the, really the approval, if you will, of the, the Tarrant County Health Department because they are the health experts. We are not. And I know they're on the, the fast track of the communication loop all the way federally and with the CDC. And it would be, I really think devastating if they don't participate to the same level that they have. And I don't expect that. I just think that having a, a county-wide approach as far as our governmental structure is set up is the absolute best way to do it. So we will see what, what happens. Again, this is a, a constant evolution. I am very pleased that our action item tonight is about a resolution to take care of our, our staff. There are people all over this nation right now that are laid off as of last night, as of today. It's happening. The, the jobs reports are kind of frightening on, on the business side of things. So for us to have the ability on our end to stave that off for our, our personnel here that take care of our students, it's, that's great. So I'm looking forward to that discussion item, action item. The, I, I am really interested in the social, emotional. If I could have Dr. Wertz come up and just address that with a little bit more level of specificity, what that looks like on this phase one. Yes, thank you for that social distancing. It is, it's so different. It is surreal, isn't it? It is, it is like we are in a nightmare that we're all in together. It really is. So, Dr. Wertz, can you describe the, the, the level of resource that might be available online for people or how much we're going to engage? And also if we have looked in, in to other districts to partner with or other, you know, social service organizations, what does that look like for us?
So we're in the very, very beginning stages of this. In fact, this idea around how we were going to address it came to birth yesterday. So as we first got all the learning online, the very thing we thought about was what, how can we address students who we know are sitting at home or families who have anxiety and have concerns? Because we know that all of us do, right? So right now, you, right now, the, the, the way we have it set up is we're just trying to give quick wins to people initially. So you'll see a one-pager, and I've read the first one that's going to be for staff, which has a link to an outside agency. It's a state agency that addresses specifically, like how do you deal with your anxiety and stress in the middle of a pandemic? It's something that specific. We also have very specific tips that say, here are some ways you can manage your personal stress. Here's some things you should think about for yourself, for, for staff. We're also putting one together for teacher, for students and for parents. Then what we're also doing is working with Anita where we'll post resources for people to figure out, where do I go to get accurate information and where do I go to find resources that can help me fill some gaps that I may have? You mentioned several of them tonight. I personally have friends who have had to lay people off already. So there are people who, who are worried about their employment. They're worried about where they're going to get their next meal, where they're going to find their commodities, all of those things. So we want to provide resources that may not even be within our realm, but at least we can direct people to those places. The other thing that we, we're lucky in terms of being a social kind of agency is we have staff that are very skilled. So we have trained counselors that work for us and we have social workers that work for us. So what we're going to try to do is leverage those individuals to provide access to people who need to talk. So that's where the hotline came from. We will solicit counselors across our district who can actually serve as, take call, receive calls to answer questions from students and families and even staff members who are having these personal challenges they wanted to talk to somebody about that we can provide them resources to. Social workers are very, very connected in the community too because they are very resourced in terms of these resources that the county has. So we will also be having a place where they, where people can call to speak directly to a social worker who can direct them to those places. Those are our initial ideas. Once we get that launched, then we're going to, we'll talk about more in-depth ways that we can go. But we wanted to try to do a quick resource check, so to speak, for people who we knew were, were hungry and needing information.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for that. And being able to assess what is out there in the need on the access issues. Because this, we're blessed that we are in a technological world to help with all of this, but we also know that we have technology and security as well. So thank you for looking at that and addressing that because it's absolutely essential. And those, those areas of our community are ones that are at the highest risk, obviously, that we're always talking about to close the achievement gap and that type of thing. So the, the more that we can do with them to make them feel better and, and more confident and at ease as well as getting, ensuring access to them for learning is, is absolutely spot on. So thank you for that. The, it, it is interesting with the college board that everything is, that they're responding as quickly as they are as well. That, that's nice. And what, what I can't, I just can't underscore it enough, though, is you guys are putting all of these factors in place when right now still the priority is make sure everybody's okay. You know, emergency response mode. I think you guys have prioritized it so well. The, the communications piece has been phenomenal. The, the website and the layout, that stuff takes hours and hours and hours and hours to lay out.
Yeah. Greg Stone has helped a lot. Many people from Anita's department, everybody, Frank, everyone has been phenomenal. And very, very responsive.
It, the, the content is phenomenal. The delivery of the content is phenomenal. You guys are just knocking it out of the park. Thank you so much. This is, this is more than a huge win. Please spread that message as far and wide. The, Dr. Brown, the same thing, all of you. It's just phenomenal. I'm, I'm, couldn't be prouder of this district. It is, it's from the top down and you are leading beyond example. And I, I, I thank you. I, at this point, I'm going to relinquish the floor because I've already taken up way too much time. I, I think I have a couple of other questions, but I'm going to allow the opportunity for my colleagues to jump in here because this is my meeting. This is our meeting. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Mr. Will Banks.
Thank you, Mrs. Mase. And thank you, Mr. Rice, Dr. Rice, for all your kind words. And it's well deserved because think about where we were on Friday and over the weekend. The number of people who worked diligently had to be twenty-four, seven over the weekend. So that Monday, we were delivering meals and Tuesday, we now have resources for parents for continuing education, which is critical. I've got a number of questions for everyone, but since you're at the podium, why don't we start with you?
Okay.
So, you know, first of all, I do want to say that, you know, you guys, we're blessed in Arlington to have the great set that we have because we had a great plan for this current year. And the realities of the battlefield were we were blown out of the water by this unprecedented event. And we quickly put a new plan in place. And it's one thing in the business world to, you know, have the realities of the battlefield kind of dictate changes to your plan. But you guys were blown out of the water, came back with Plan B, and it's flexible enough because in this situation, it's not just the reality of the battlefield was a little bit different. The reality of the battlefield is changing on an hourly basis as we go through. And I think, I commend you guys, especially on your piece, Dr. Wertz, for having a plan that's flexible because hopefully at the end of eight weeks, we can table phase three or phase four. Phase four will probably still be needed, but the reality is, is we don't know. And the commissioner has said that those of us who are doing this extended break should, our parents should be prepared that this will go at least eight weeks. And you guys put in a pretty, pretty good plan. Having said that, let me jump to your section. Flipping on a dime and going to an online model takes a lot in terms of a technology stack of tools. And that stack has to be adjusted, like you said, for our pre-kindergarten, our kindergarten students' needs are much different than our AP students that are seniors taking AP calculus or physics. And I think you put it in a plan that addresses the spectrum of needs across our students. What, so you mentioned Canvas as our primary platform. Have we really stress tested to know that it's going to meet our expectations in terms of when we get to phase three and, and teachers are going to be using it to conduct conferences and, and instruction directly to their students?
Yeah. So Canvas is very widely used. Many universities use it. It's a platform that's actually across the country. We actually have been using Canvas for quite some time and many of our classrooms leverage Canvas regularly, even with the teacher in the room as a way of differentiating for kids. So, yeah, we're not concerned about, right now, we don't have any reason to believe that Canvas won't function and function well. We also have other resources at our disposal should that be the case. But our intent in terms of training is to ensure everybody is on Canvas. The, the bright side of this, and if, if there is a silver lining, is all of our staff will then, when, when this is all over, have a new skill set that they can then leverage with instruction, which is a direction we're going with our learning system anyways. So our goal is to make sure that we leverage the runway that we now have, based on this phase, these phases, to shore up the proficiency of our teachers and to make sure that they're ready and able to deliver the instruction that we want. There are some states that have already engaged in this a couple of weeks ago because they've had shutdowns early. And the word that I've received even from colleagues that I've been dialoguing with who have contact with those individuals, there's been lots of chaos because teachers have been, have just thrown at them. They just had to come up with solutions. They didn't know what they were doing. We want to avoid that because people are already under a lot of stress. We want to add to it. So our intent is to be smart about it and be methodical and do it the correct way, which is provide people the training that they need during their workday and then gear them up and support them as they start to put things online. So to answer your question, we're not really, Canvas is widely used and we do not have, we have not had issues with Canvas. We, we feel confident in it.
Well, I'm a big fan of Canvas for a long time. It's, it's a great platform and I'm glad, I was glad when our district chose it. But in terms of our needs specifically, if I can be a little more pointed.
Okay.
For instance, if we were to need to use it for video, someone told me, I have a friend who's at UTA and they, their teacher uses it now during this situation to do the video conference, live class to students. Or are we looking at using Zoom? I mean, how well is?
So Zoom is not a great tool for that because even if they give us broader access to more people online at the same time, the bandwidth, it just doesn't function very well. Lots of connectivity issues. So we don't plan on using Zoom. In terms of Canvas, the way we're intending on designing the courses is more asynchronous type classes. So the teacher would video their content, put it online, and kids would be able to work self-paced. What we will do, and we've talked about, is there is going to be some need, I believe, that it's important need, for teachers to interface with their kids to answer questions because we want them to teach them. The challenge that we have to work through is that if you're a student, I'll just use a high school student, for example, even if our initial launch is primarily around four core content areas and the CTE class, if you have it, you're, you can't be engaging with teachers at random times all over the place when you have four courses going on at the same time, even if you're managing your own pace in a timeframe that we define for you on Canvas. So what we'll have to do is work with the principals to establish a standardized schedule that says if you're an English teacher and you're interfacing with your students, this is when it has to happen. When you're math, this is when it has to happen. And we may have to watch for what you're talking about, which is if people, if you have, you know, two thousand, you know, teachers on at the same time, well, that's over exaggeration. But like several hundred teachers on at the same time in English, talking to students in high school, is that going to be a problem? We've never been in this situation before, so we don't know for sure. But primarily, it will not be a huge issue, shouldn't be, because we don't have any anticipation that people will log in and the teacher will just be teaching the lesson. They'll be watching it. The, the way we'll structure Canvas is more where the, the content is delivered out and then kids can interface with their teachers using the platform.
Yeah, that's, that's great because you mentioned that you had reached out to colleagues who have already been through this learning curve. And there are a number of Americans, teachers in China, in Beijing, in Shanghai and elsewhere who are three month, two months ahead of us on this, who've gone through this same exercise. And that was one of the key takeaways is that the live class online doesn't really work.
No.
And that, you know, and, and students aren't, scheduling's a nightmare, et cetera, et cetera. And that exactly what you talked about is probably the best practice.
Right.
Has shown to be most effective. The, all right, so we talked about real time. So the other issue from, that we've learned from the folks in China is that teacher's time is valuable. And what can be a real huge time suck is technical problems and issues. And the one thing they stress is teachers should not be doing tech support, which begs the question, how are we in terms of our IT staff and being able to help parents download new apps and students who may not have the right connectivity issues or something going on in their house? What are we doing? Have we thought about the need to ramp up tech support staff to, so that teachers aren't doing tech support and that we can ensure the maximum amount of time is spent actually learning?
Yes. So I, I'll speak to our side of the house and then I might turn it to Dr. Hill to talk specifically what I don't know about Dwight, but I can share some information I do know. In terms of our, what I call our instructional technology staff, we will have them ready and able to provide support through a tech support line so that, that teachers who get stuck aren't sitting there trying to figure out how to work through things. We, we will make ourselves available. And also in the design of their own instruction, they will be side by side, willing to help them because they will be actually providing some, many, much of the professional learning directly connected to the use of the LMS. In terms of connectivity, devices I'll speak to, and then I'll let Dr. Hill speak to the actual connectivity in terms of leveraging some of the resources through Spectrum and other free services that are now being made available. What we are working on is making sure, like I mentioned earlier, that students have the right device and that they have one in their home and assessing what that may look like. Because if I have a, if I have three kids living in my house and they're at three different grade levels and I don't have a device at all, having one isn't going to be helpful. And if I have one, but it's not really the one another grade level may need, then we'll have to work through that. Based on the assessments of the staff that I heard today, we believe we do have enough devices that all students could have one. We do have devices in our campuses that, that are even, that are older, that haven't, that are not necessarily the up-to-date newest ones that we have, but we keep them and we've been using them. We even have those that we can still distribute. So I don't think we have concerns from the staff department right now in terms of accessibility to devices. We believe we can get there. What we're now talking about is how do we make sure that parents understand and that students understand how to log in and get Wi-Fi? One of the challenges we still have to work through is if I'm a home- One of the challenges we still have to work through is if I'm a homeless student and I'm living, for example, in a facility or at a hotel, and they are providing me with Internet, but they don't give me Wi-Fi, how do I plug my computer in with an Ethernet if I don't have one? That's actually, that came up this afternoon. So those are the details we're still kind of working through. I don't know if there's anything that you might want to add?
So consistent with what Dr. Wertz was saying, we are looking at other opportunities. We have had staff in contact with Spectrum, it's actually reaching out to us to potentially look at what options would be to provide Wi-Fi for students and families that don't have it. We've had other calls where we're hearing what other districts are doing with regard to providing Wi-Fi in areas of the city that doesn't actually have it. So we, again, this is, I think you said it earlier, very new, and we're just kind of stoking the coal to figure out what all the options are, but we're definitely working to try to resolve.
So specific, so is there anyone that can speak to the need for additional resources in terms of providing? Go ahead.
No, I think at this point, really, our focus is assessment first of devices, the need for device, or do you have connectivity at home? That's really in this first phase because it is very much one-way delivery of instructions. So just now, starting that surveying process, actually designing the survey, it's informal right now when teachers are calling students and their families about, do you have Internet? Do you have a device? Are you equipped? Really just as a planning start. Connectivity, there is a digital divide, as we know, and it will be an issue in Arlington. And, and so how do we mitigate that? We have had offers, now quite frankly, in some of those offers really have to be vetted out to make sure that they're truly offers that are sustainable and offers that are not linked to some other expense. And so just as a context, we have had many offers of many things that are linked to more profit-making, I don't know how else to say it right at this point, but, so we have to vet those very carefully, even the ones that seem very, very helpful at this time. This is where also a community effort is important, and we've mentioned that before. I've visited with staff and other officials as well. Because this is an opportunity when a city or a county says, how can we help? Well, we can help with connectivity in our city and in places where we know there's a digital divide. So as much as we want to do this kind of accelerated, we also know that this is one of those challenges that is not something a district by itself should try to be tackling across the community. There's just so many factors. We should mitigate those. The technology tool, for example, the device, is something we can really make a big difference in. You also have to keep in mind that that's a control issue in terms of checking out that equipment and making sure that we have priorities. So we talked today, and it's real time, right? So we talked today at staff meeting about, you know, well, who has that priority? What is the first priority? Is the first priority, I don't have a device? Maybe the second priority is I have a device, but there's two or three people or kids in my family. And then, and keep kind of layering that down because at some point, those priorities are going to exhaust the resources that we have, right? This would be a good opportunity, if there are any nonprofits or generous businesses, which we've heard of, one, one has offered, I'm not going to say that because we're still vetting that out, to, how can we help? Well, you can help by devices and connectivity. Those things are really important. We're going to try, and this is part of Dr. Wertz's effort here, is we're going to try to make this available as much and as widespread as possible on Phase One in a one-way kind of trajectory. We also talked about mailing some of these packets home, or when we're doing the meal services, that they could just hand the packets out. It's very one-way, and I'm going to stop here in a minute, but I'll just also add one more context. This issue for our country and our state, not just Arlington ISD, but all of us, is one that we should, when we look back and say, what have we learned? This is one of those issues that could be a gap that we could work on filling so that we're not in this situation as a state in terms of delivering instruction remotely. So I'll pause there. I don't want to, you know, technology to get ahead of that. We really have to vet a lot of that out. Right now, it's building the portal and helping people who have access and all that kind of stuff.
So, thank you, Dr. Vazos. You know, just, you know, some of that question with just stressing my desire that, you know, as we go forward, whatever we can do to mitigate any site issues so that the teachers can focus on instruction and not on tech support, that would, that would be wise. So I will say that I am excited because I'm, because this is an opportunity to get all of those teachers that maybe were a little reluctant to get on board with Canvas, now they're going to have to. And, you know, I can tell you as a parent, it's kind of frustrating going in and seeing less than half of my kids' teachers, you know, you go to their, that class Canvas page and there's nothing. Whereas the other ones, they go there to get every one of their assignments, it links out to their homework on UT or wherever, all the tests are on there, all the, all the videos of the lectures are on there. So there is a wide disparity between, from classroom to classroom and campus to campus on those that are using that effectively to drive instruction and also help parents stay informed and engaged as well. And so I'll be glad to see that, this is one of those things that I think is going to help bring everybody on board to see the benefits of that platform. And then in terms of kind of your plan, you know, I'll give you feedback. My son just got a take-home test today, so from one of his classes. So we have teachers that are starting in Phase One, but we have some that are already clearly heading towards Phase Three and who are posting an online lecture tomorrow for them to be sure to watch. So it's, which is really great to see that, you know, there are, we've got a lot of great dedicated teachers out there, and kudos to them that are jumping right in and keeping going and, and working. And I think that is a propitious sign for what we have to look forward to with our staff. So, I had more, but I think in the essence of time, let me just say, well, in the effort to kind of keep tabs on our students, are we going to be requiring our teachers in Phase Two and also Phase Three to be checking in with, how is it going to, how are we going to make sure that teachers can really assess where, which students are staying up with the work and at least attempting it, and which are checked out and they're like, hey, I'm on vacation, see you later, and don't ever check in, do any of the assignments?
So...
How are we going to provide consistent, I know it's going to be variable, but...
Right, so there, if you are the teacher on Canvas, you can actually look at the analysis of your, of your students and their, their interaction on the platform. So as a teacher, I can go online, I can look and see how many hours Steven was actually on, how many pages he actually touched, how long he spent in those pages. I can get a sense of his average and how, how much he, how often he's submitting on time, every time he's late. I can see what his average percentage of correct answers are on the, on the, on the assignments I give. So there is a way for teachers simply to easily see which of their students that they will enroll, because we won't enroll all the kids in it, which of their students are engaging and which ones are not showing up, and how long they're staying engaged. And the neat thing about it is it also gives you a little bit of a sense about how proficient students are. If Steven's only online for a short amount of time and he's getting through the information, he's mastering it, that tells me something about his proficiency versus someone who is on it for 10 hours struggling. So all of those analytics are available to the user, the teacher, who is on the backside of the, of the actual face of the, of the course. In terms of taking attendance, we haven't worked through attendance-taking. Another question that's common that's coming up already today is what about grades and how do we deal with grades? We're still working through the details around that, and the reason that that has to be thought through is because we have to make sure that there's equity. When you're dealing with assigning grades and changing grades and affecting kids' GPA long-term and all that, there are students who have invested a lot of time in doing very well in their courses, and we want to honor that work. And what we don't want to do is create a scenario where we have haves and have-nots, and the haves are actually moving forward, and the have-nots are struggling, and they're all held to the same standard. So we don't have a solution for that yet. We will have to find one. We don't have any intention on collecting any of that grades or anything like that during Phase One or Phase Two. Any discussion of that would be towards Phase Three when individualized learning was happening, but even then, it becomes very complex. So we're, right now, I've told principals, even in today's meetings, that we do not have an answer for that, but that when we come to, closer to when we have an answer, we would make them abreast of that.
Yeah. And just a clarification point on, thank you on that, by the way, but a clarification point on social emotional learning, the hotline itself, that is up and running?
It's not up and running, we're working on it. We still have to recruit the staff to do it and then put the line on place. So that is not, when we have it, the number and everything will be available, but it's, that's in the works. All of those things on that slide are in the works. The only thing that I've seen off the press so far is the initial one about how to address it with your, with yourself as a staff member.
Okay.
And the expectation with that... Is really like a tier-one hotline, it's, these are counselors...
That's right.
Who provide this kind of support and things like that, but it's not to necessarily triage and things like that. It's to refer, it's to share resources, it's to check in, it's at that level, and that expectation.
That is right.
So, and you said parents...
And that we have to keep in mind, we're dealing, these are school counselors, they're not licensed therapists and things like that, yeah.
And you said parents can call in because, you know, they're dealing with the reality of...
That's correct.
Having three kids at home and...
Right, we don't, we will not...
And cabin fever and...
We're not going to be funneling parents directly to counselors for their own social, emotional, we will direct them towards the social workers.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Wertz. It's a great plan, kudos again. And just so Anita didn't fill up, then I don't have a direct question, but I do want to say phenomenal job in getting the word out and dealing with all the communication demands. I can't even imagine what the demands from the press were, but what you did on the meal plan in terms of seeing the numbers change from where they were on Monday, and which I thought was a phenomenal job, and a phenomenal amount of meals on Monday to see where we are today with a, you know, three-fold almost increase. So kudos to you. Unfortunately, my plan, my question is not for you, it's for Ms. Powell. And this is the last one, I promise. So, so we've, we've had a big jump, like I said, from 2,000 and something to 6,000. Where are we on, in terms of maximum capacity at each of the facilities? How close are, are we at like half of what our capacity is in terms of being able to serve meals?
No, I don't think I would say that we are at half even. We, just for planning purposes, had anticipated perhaps 300 meals per site, and so that's like 6,900 meals total. So we're still less than halfway to that max capacity. And so there are a number of factors that affect that operation as we move forward, but we think we're still in good shape.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. Walton, would you like to present your questions at this time?
Did you, okay, can I, I'm hearing a little feedback, I'm sorry about that. I just want to add my comments and how confident I am in the staff that they're doing everything they possibly can to meet the needs of our kids, and, and that's so important. And I know our teachers and staff are going to be very appreciative of us being able to tonight pass a resolution to continue paying their salaries. That's, that's critical. And the food service crew is doing an amazing job meeting a primary need for so many. I'm proud to be part of this. I wish I was there with you. I'm home following the CDC guidelines for senior members of the community. I'm well and hope to stay that way. And thank you to the staff that made it possible for me to participate tonight remotely. I hope all of our AISD family stays well. Please stay home as much as you can to limit your exposure and wash your hands as much as you can. Thanks for letting me speak tonight and be with you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mr. Chapa.
Thank you, President Mays. I don't have many questions. The one question I do have, though, that, that came up earlier was that, Ms. Powell, you mentioned that, you know, operations are still ongoing, things are moving forward, and you mentioned that there was a meeting with architects for one of the bond projects. And so my question with that is, I know that we just had a new bond, and we've got a couple of time-sensitive projects in there that are already underway. How do you anticipate that this will affect those projects in particular?
That's a, part of our objective is that it not negatively impact those projects, and we can't say for certain that it won't. But we are in the planning phase on several projects, and we have begun construction on a couple of them. So the construction is continuing. The planning phase, we are handling those via video conferencing, and so far, that has proven to work well. Just as an example, we had planned before our closure to, to begin the charrette process to design or inform the design of the new Thornton and the new Berry. We'd already begun that with Webb, and we were well down the road with Webb. So instead of doing in-person meetings for the Berry and the Thornton charrette process, we will be conducting those best we can through video conferencing, much like we're doing this evening. This afternoon, we had a meeting with architects on one project, and likewise, they showed us, they had, we were using Zoom, and they were able to show us the design, and several of us were involved in the, the meeting and offered comment just like we would if we were sitting around a table. So that was very helpful. And we'll, we'll work very diligently to try to continue those kinds of discussions.
Thank you. I don't really have many other questions. I have, I think, two points of feedback that I've heard from, from community members that I'd like to share, and then just sort of one, another comment about our food service program. And I'll start with the feedback. And especially starting, I would say, last night when some of the Dallas County Schools and a few others across the state announced that they would be closing indefinitely, I started hearing from parents asking if we had similar plans, and others have talked about how we have, you know, we're working in conjunction with Tarrant County Health and other Tarrant County School districts, and that our goal, as it was before, is to reach a unified decision again, and there's many reasons for doing that. The feedback I got, though, with respect to, from, from parents is they would like some sense of definiteness. They don't really like the phrase indefinite, it sort of sounds a little ominous, it, it puts a lot of things still in flux, and they're making childcare decisions, and this whole situation is in flux, and so there's only so much that we can do to provide some certainty. But as we move forward in our discussions with other districts and with Tarrant County, I think that the, the sense that I got, overwhelming sense from the guy that I got from the parents I talked to, is they would like to see us set, even if it's something we have to come back later and extend, you know, we anticipate being closed for six weeks and we're committing to that, or eight weeks, as was mentioned earlier, and we're committing to that, on the understanding that maybe we pull this back, maybe it needs to be extended further, or we make a decision as a district to say, from where we sit now, eight weeks out is, is almost mid-May, we would only come back and, you know, really come back for two, two and a half weeks anyway, make a decision and just say, we're going to do what we can with the online learning process for the rest of the semester, but we're really done for the year. So that was the feedback that I got from parents, and I would say they overwhelmingly fell into those two camps, and none of them really felt comfortable with an indefinite, you know, decision. The other point of feedback I got, which is really granular, and I don't expect that it's... it's anything that y'all have addressed in any substantive way so far, but that a few parents have, have concerns about as we move forward, is of, you know, if we don't come back in, in relatively soon, there are parents that have made, you know, some sort of outlay for a student activity fee of some kind, or there's an extracurricular that their student involved in, and they've, they've prepaid some things, or maybe it's some sort of after-school program. But they've got some financial commitments out there of varying sizes. And parents who, especially those who work hourly, are understandably at this point getting a little nervous about their own jobs and, and their sources of income. And so they've asked as we move forward, you know, if communication can be made about whether or not we will be repaying any of those sorts of fees or costs as, if we don't come back. Give some, some consideration to that, because that would, for some of our families, be a help to them to get that back if it's not going to be used. And then the last thing that I just wanted to, to share, and everybody else has talked about the meal program, and I can't say enough good things about what the district has done with that and how those operations have sprung up and scaled in such a short amount of time. And I really want to emphasize to the community that's watching is that this is a food-for-all program. It's, this is, Dr. Wertz mentioned earlier, we want to do things during this time that take stress off of our families and not add to it. And for many families, you know, deciding what we're going to do for breakfast and lunch, or where we, you know, where we're going to get our meals, people are stressed about going to the grocery store, they're stressed about getting out of their, their house for, for a very long amount of time. This is a way that the district is, is helping the community. And so any, the district's committed to any child who comes from zero to 18, as long as they're present, they're going to get a meal regardless of financial need. And, and if, you know, this is something, if we wanted to restrict it to students on free and reduced lunch, that message would be given. And so I think there's a little bit of confusion in the community of, of what is this program intending to do? And it's to feed our children while they're out, and maybe even provide them some sense of normalcy during this time when they otherwise would be in school, to maybe see a familiar face on a campus and maybe get one of their favorites from, meals from school during that time. And so this is a, a community resource that we're making available, and I can only encourage people in the community to take advantage of it. And with that, I, I don't have any other further questions or comments.
I would like to address a little bit of... Mr. Chapa's question or, or comment, because I think it's important for the public, just a little behind the scenes is, there's really two or several spheres of, of decision-making, right? So, because we've got a lot of questions about graduation, and how does a year close, and promotion requirements and things like that. And just to be, give a little context, we have daily calls with the Commissioner of Education every day, seven days a week. And these questions are being sourced so that there's some consistency across the state, because there's some things they have authority over, some things we have authority locally over, and we want to make sure we're consistent. So I want to reassure the public that we are very concerned about these things. We're taking them in phases, just like you've mentioned, priority. We have not lost sight of the fact that, you know, there's a lot to cover about how this year concludes, whether we come back in, in, you know, within the two weeks or two weeks, you know, or longer. And, but there's state implications and state requirements and things like that. Probably a most common question is, will we have to come in the summer to make up all this? Well, you know, while we have some authority over that, the state has some authority over that, too. And, and so we're, we're sourcing those things on a daily basis, and I think that it's, it's important to, to have that consistency. But we, we're going to continue to push out those FAQs that will include a lot of those questions. And Anita has, Ms. Foster has, has shared with us over and over that it's better to, you know, just say, I don't, we don't have an answer this time, versus not say anything at all. And so just a little context of how those things are being decided. And in relation to closing, if we have to close further, clarity would be really helpful, I think, during this phase of uncertainty, some clarity. When they removed the STAR requirement, that was a clarity. Some would argue that that wasn't like a big priority, but it was a priority. People had a lot of questions. Removing that off the table, I commend them for doing that. And early on, there's no reason for that to be lingering. So we are in kind of that unified effort with the county health as well, to make sure that we're consistent in providing that clarity. And so certainly appreciate the, the comments there, and, and, and thank you for the thinking there, the feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Chapa. Mr. Hogg.
Let me see if it's on. There we go. Thank you, President Mays. Dr. Kavassos well said. And let me, let me just say to my colleagues, good questions. I also appreciate all my colleagues and all staff. I think we all thought about the health and safety of our students first, first and foremost. We're here to teach students, but seeing the communication that came out immediately, the health and safety, our kids eating, what are they doing, how do we keep them safe, was number one priority. And, and not just for students, but for our staff and our entire community. Tough times, call on tough people. And let me tell you, our staff has excelled. And let me just say, from the communication standpoint, and this is not just the Department of Communications, you've done an outstanding job leading, but all of our departments have had an outstanding integrated communication approach across the board. It has been very well received from the community. It has been recognized from organizations that work with multiple districts. And I have to commend you all for the level of transparency. Because sometimes it's hard in these areas to have a full leg and full exposure to transparency, because it's hard to say, we don't know. But at this time, there's times we don't know. And I think the transparency also, we may make mistakes during this time. And those mistakes can and probably will occur. But the level of communication, the option, has been truly outstanding from, from our district. I think it is, you know, it's someone with two young children, and we see that, we see what's happening. We got the call from the teacher today checking on us, and she probably had a quick idea that our family probably knew some insight of what was going on. But still, knowing she was calling every student was making a big difference. A couple of, not a lot of questions, my colleagues asked most of them. I did want to make a couple of just comments and pieces. And Dr. Wertz, I appreciate you talking about preventing regression, because, because that's the concern I start seeing, is our loss of instruction time and where aggression comes. One of the things, as we get into Phase Two, I would just ask, is, is we get into these, you know, everyone has TEAC's learning standards that we have to follow. The advantage of a large district is we have a lot of people and a lot of really smart people, and we can bring sources together, and we could do it in economies of scale. Some of our smaller districts in this state don't have those economy scales and rules. Well, well, we've got to worry about AISD first, we're still 5.4 million people that are in these public schools in the state of Texas. So I think any way we can do to collaborate and offer, here's some learning modules, here's things like that, to be able to send out to some of our smaller districts that are around us, I think is a big factor, because they don't have curriculum departments, they don't have some of the IT staff to be able to do some of those things that we have as that. And I know, I think how hard this is for us and making sure our students are learning. And I then start thinking, you know, we have economies of scale, which is really hard sometimes, but then I start thinking, small districts, how are they tackling some of these options on there? Let me also talk, and, and, Dr. Wertz, you talked about Phase Four, and I'm glad you got into this, because listen, that's a ways down the road, but we've got to start thinking of Phase Four. And summer learning's reality, but then you said it exactly as I was thinking, well, yeah, what about the ones who aren't summer learning, and now they've regressed, and we've got to recap in 2020, 21? I think to Dr. Kavassos and this board, we've got to start pushing our legislators on state accountability for 20 and 21. The governor made the correct decision of eliminating STAR. But I would sit there and say, how do we take that away for 2021 and make up that time that unfortunately we do have in our lessons plans for test prep? Because it's in there, it's part of it, it's what we spend. How do we find that time to go back and make up for some of that regression, things that we're going to have to reteach to make sure all kids are on that level? Because I think about that third grader who's now becoming a fourth grader, or that fourth grader who's now a fifth grader in a major testing year, and they're going to have to recap a lot of fourth grade to get them caught up. And how do we get them caught up to that fifth grade level? Not even mentioned in our higher levels on there, but you get into those younger levels, the more we can take that. I think it's something that we've got to start immediately pushing. Our legislators are asking how they can help. Well, there's a quick way. They can start helping quickly on this. Through all of this, and as we start, I think we've been very cautious, and, and I, maybe, maybe cautious isn't the right word, very thoughtful of our staff that's home and what they're facing outside of work hours. And as we start asking more of our staff while they are working at home, I do want us to make sure we're thoughtful and cautious over, like many people, we're all working from home. I've worked from home a lot in my life. You now have a different situation of lots of kids still being at home, and a lot of our teachers do have children at home. I know it's made my workday a little longer every single day with my children coming in and out of my office, and my wife now automatically being a home, former certified teacher, now teaching constantly the entire time, where it goes. I just want us to make sure we're taking that into account on everything we're doing, because it is changed from what's happening. And so while, while they are at home, and I do think they can help us and do a lot of different things, we still have to take and have a lot of flexibility to be able to provide that to them. I, I just, that's all I have. I don't have a lot of questions, comments. I just wanted to make some statements. I think we are thriving. I continue our level of transparency, continue our communication. Dr. Kavassos, as a leader, you have to step up and be that, and you've done that. And I, I truly appreciate that, and your, your level of candor with community is, is made a big difference for what's happened. So I appreciate everyone for all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. And thank you to all of my colleagues for your questions and your comments. I just have one question before I make a final comment and then a motion. And that is, for the packets during those Phase One, Phase Two, how are we addressing getting those packets to our homeless students?
That's a, a good question. Right now, our primary mode is through the meals. Some of the conversations that we've been having is, how do we address meals for kids who are not able to transport themselves to a school? And that's actually an ongoing conversation we've had today, literally even right before we walked into this room, we were talking about it. It came up even with principals today. So we're trying to find multiple avenues for people to get it. So there's, there's actually three ways we're currently thinking about. One is putting them all online regardless. That way, people can at least access them from some source. Making them available at their meal stop points so that they can pick them up physically if they're driving through. And then this won't address the homeless students unless we have a place where they're residing. So the thing to keep in mind about homelessness is it doesn't necessarily mean that someone's living on the street. They do typically, many students are either double familyed up in a one location or living at a hotel, but there is a, a place of residence where we can mail something. For all students where we have addresses, we can also bulk mail it. So we're trying to find every avenue that we can possibly think about to get those resources to students. But those are the three primary modes that we're considering right now.
Okay. So maybe for some of those students, where maybe they are living with relatives, friends, could there be any way where maybe there could be some self-identifying that says, hi, I'm, you know, John Smith, this is where I am, so that then they can get feedback and actually still react?
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. We can definitely think about, for sure. Like, is there a way for, for them to tell us, this is where I am? Yes, for sure. That's something we can think about.
Okay. Very good. So a few comments that I have is, first of all, thank you, Dr. Kavassos, and your entire team for navigating through such a fluid environment during what is a global pandemic, and taking a unified approach here on the local level to make sure that we're supporting our staff and our students and the community. As much as I appreciate what has been done and what's currently being done, I also appreciate the barometer that y'all are using to say, do we need to switch directions? For instance, feeding our students, but then finding the pocket of students who still can't get meals the way that we're providing. How can we still provide for them? I really appreciate that as well. Our teachers have been vocalizing how much they miss their students, how can they help and volunteer, and what y'all are trying to implement. I think our teachers are genuinely wanting to make sure that not only do they have their resources and know how to use them, but that their students also have those resources. And so that they can continue learning, so that we don't have the regress. And in addition to that, as Mr. Chapa said, give them some sense of normalcy and something positive to actually do during the day with what's going on. So kudos to our teachers, great teachers that want to teach. As you see, we are following the health of being separated, although we're here together. We've got our sanitizer. We want to make sure that we are true examples. Ms. Walton stated her participation in that, to the community as well. Thank you to those who are watching us via video conference and not gathering and attending here altogether, but still being very engaged in what is going on. Again, my colleagues and I wish each family safety and health during these difficult, challenging days. And I think we are all very anxious to hear this resolution and make a vote on it. And I will read the resolution in full. This is the Resolution of the Arlington ISD Authorizing Administrative Response to Pandemic Emergency. Whereas the Arlington Independent School District seeks to maintain a core of dedicated and caring employees, and whereas the district wishes to provide the greatest amount of stability for students and staff while continuing to ensure their safety, and whereas Texas Education Code, Section 25.081, authorizes the Commissioner of Education to approve requests for a variance in total instructional minutes if the district is closed for disasters, floods, or extreme weather conditions, or other emergencies that force closings of schools, and whereas the TEC, Section 48.005D, authorizes the Commissioner of Education to adjust the average daily attendance of a district if the district is closed for disasters, floods, extreme weather conditions, or other emergencies that have a significant effect on the district's attendance, and whereas the Commissioner of Education has stated that TEC, Section 21.401C, represents a legislative determination that a public purpose exists to continue educators' salary, salaries during times of emergencies, and whereas the Commissioner of Education has stated that he will approve requests for a variance in total contract days if districts make such a request commiserate with the number of days the district is closed for emergencies, and whereas all district employees, contractual and at-will, contribute to the achievement of the educational mission of Arlington ISD, and whereas paying at-will employees for emergency school closure days will enhance morale, reduce employee turnover, and reduce district exposure to unemployment claims. Whereas paying at-will employees who worked during the pandemic emergency a premium rate will encourage at-will employees to volunteer for critical duty during such emergencies. Now therefore be it resolved, one, that the Board of Trustees authorizes the superintendent to petition the Commissioner of Education for a waiver of the number of minutes of instruction to accommodate all minutes lost due to closure for the pandemic emergency, and, two, that the petition request a shorter employment contract term commiserate with the number of days closed, and, three, that at-will employees not on unpaid leave be paid at their prevailing daily wage for any day school is and was closed for the pandemic emergency, and, four, the auxiliary and salary non-exempt employees who are required to work on days when schools are closed for the pandemic emergency be paid at the rate of one and one-half times their hourly rate for pay for all hours worked. I now make a motion that we approve the resolution as read. So I've got a motion by Keisha Mays and a second by Mr. Hogg. Are there any questions? Seeing none, if you would please raise your hand for a yes vote. One, two, three, four, five, six. All present in video conference vote in the affirmative. The resolution has passed. Thank you very much to my colleagues. So now we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Benjamin, are there any cards?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing none, if you would please raise your hand for a yes vote. Okay, seeing no cards, we'll move on. Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, President Mays, we do not.
Thank you.
I'm hesitant here, because I do want to say a couple of other words, if that would be okay now, or whenever it's appropriate.
Yes, you may say it now before I adjourn.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to reach out to our community. Thank you for being Arlington. Starting with our district, thank you for being AISD. The, we will get through this, as demonstrated tonight by the incredible work that has gone in, that we've reviewed and learned about. We will come out on the other side of this stronger than ever. I am so proud to be representing our community with this district. Arlington is truly a can-do community, a can-do city. And I have felt that so much in the past 48 to 96 hours, not just within our district, but within Arlington. I'm sure I am not alone. We have been bombarded with people saying, what can we do? How can we help? What can we do to help feed the kids? What can we do? And to that note, it is, it's unfortunate, but to appreciate and honor social distancing, we can't have everybody come and help right now. I just want to say thank you for the amazing spirit that is Arlington, that is our community. People want to help, and it's a very precarious situation that we've never faced before to have such an outpouring, which is not a surprise. But to have to say, we've got to do this a certain way right now, to respect everyone's overall safety and health. So don't, don't give up, though, because we'll work on things. We're going to get through this. And I also, to that note, want to say to our teachers in this district, I can't tell you how many Facebook posts, as an example, social media, that I've seen for teachers saying, hey, it's a canned post that's going out with, I'm a teacher, I can help. And then they put their specific qualifications and what they're doing, and hey, contact me if you need some help. That's phenomenal. That is our yes-we-can spirit, that we will survive and come through. So that combined with our efforts of communicating with our other stakeholders, our other agencies, officials, locally, we will be stronger than ever. So I just, I really wanted to put that out there, because I don't know that we had touched upon that. But please, community, thank you, thank you for what you are doing in your heart. And I just think that's so cool.
Thank you, Dr. Rice, and...
Ms. Mays, if I could, a quick final word. I do want to thank all of our parents out there listening at home, and all of our teachers and staff. We're driving really fast here, but we're trying to take the best interest of your students, your children, and all of our stakeholders in mind, and do the right thing. We're driving fast. If I can mix metaphors, some, when you drive fast, sometimes things don't stick to the wall. But the thing that this group has proven is, they learn quickly. They felt fast, so we can succeed faster. And if there's anything that you think is not working, don't hesitate to speak up. But by and large, I think we've succeeded. Our staff has proven adaptable and resilient. And I thank all of our staff, especially our teachers. Bear with us. We're figuring this out together, and we'll get through this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Okay. Mr. Secretary, you did say that there's nothing else, there's no request. Okay. And then I also just want to add, and I know, Dr. Rice, that this is what you were saying, for Arlington, but our full AISD community, which also includes some parts outside of Arlington altogether, and I know that was implied. And then the last thing that I want to say is, to what you're saying, actions speak louder than words. You've heard everything that we've said tonight, but please continue to go to the website every single day and see the things that the district is doing. And I think that you'll get even a bigger, better taste of how great AISD was, how AISD continues to be, and how they will be in the future. So with that being said, it is 8:11, and this meeting is adjourned.